Good evening, everybody. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. It is the fifteenth of February, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in all.
Meeting is being recorded by our superintendent's assistant, Jamie Wixton, and Noah is handling CCTV, so there's ample recordings and record of what we say tonight, so everybody make sure you're on your best behavior. In all seriousness, our next agenda item is public participation, but for those of you who are listening and don't see, there is no one in the audience. So we will move on to good news. Anybody have any good news they'd like to share? Except for Gisella, because she's-- and we've promised not to take away any of her thunder. Go ahead, Joyce.
I won't take away any of her thunder. I just want to say the good news is that I did my homework that Mrs. Chandler gave us last time.
Yes.
I know she's not here because they have an event going on at the elementary school, but yeah. So I will wait until next time to share. But let's just say third grade ELA is no joke.
Did you pass the quizzes at the end?
Well, I don't know. That's why I need her to be here, so she can tell me how I did.
You think that's better? I had math.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, it was really interesting.
Duly noted, and we'll look forward to when Mrs. Chandler--
Okay.
--Dr. Chandler comes back.
Yes.
Yes. Anybody else have any good news? Okay. Moving right along, student representative report. Gisella, you're on.
Thank you. So during the last two weeks of school, Film Club has started their 1958 movie, which is the movie Vertigo.
I was born, by the way, before that. Just don't try to slip anything by me.
Key Club started its annual prom dress collection, and due to the necessary generosity of this community, we were able to collect over 25 dresses and around 25 pairs of shoes as well.
That's outstanding.
It truly is. We've shown them during lunches, and there has been a lot of excitement around them, and students are allowed to take them after school as well as during lunches if they'd like. Newspaper Club has just distributed its second paper of the year. The Theater Club is diligently working, as we are currently two and a half weeks out from our district festival convention or competition. Mr. Palladino met with the student representatives of each advisory for all five grades and discussed what the cellphone policy committee was doing and asked for preliminary/first impressions for potential policy outcomes, which sparked a very productive conversation on both the concerns and also the positive logistics of potential outcomes from the committee. And then on to more academic notes. The seniors just had their senior scholarship planning meeting, where we were given information to the differences between loans and grants. We were given paperwork to apply to Wareham scholarships and were reminded to see the dozens of scholarships posted on our Google classrooms for both two- to four-year schools, trainings, and certification programs. And on some very exciting notes, nine seniors have been accepted to UMass Dartmouth. Six were accepted to Bristol Community College, all due to their hard work and the incredible On-the-Spot Decision Day that Wareham High School hosted. That is all.
Any questions for Gisella? Yes, Joyce.
The newspaper, so is that something that is in print or just online?
It is currently in print. We have been trying to get it online.
Okay. Like on the website?
Yes.
Well, maybe next time you could bring us a copy. I would love to see a copy of the newspaper.
I can do that.
Okay. Thank you. And another question. The scholarship, you said scholarships are available on the Google platform. There used to be, you know, like a rack. Is that still there too, or is everything online?
It is also there as well.
It is? Okay. So is it safe to say that all scholarships, though, are online? So if I were a parent of a senior and I couldn't go into the guidance office, could I see everything that's available?
Yes, and the guidance counselors make sure to have monthly updates to the scholarships and list them in order of when their due dates are, so it is very streamlined and easy to see the scholarships from my point of view.
All right. Great. That's great. Thank you.
I read somewhere that the FAFSA, if that's the way you say the acronym, was delayed in getting out to the students.
Yes.
Is it now available?
It is now available, but there has been a lot of delays and complications with it. Schools are also pushing back their deadlines as they're seeing that it's--
They are?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good news.
Yes.
I was unaware that there were actually loans unrelated to FAFSA that are available to students. What are they? Where do they come from?
So from my-- from the information from the presentation, you can get loans directly from schools, so.
Okay. So you're talking about the colleges to which you apply?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing local, no local loans?
Subsidized. There are subsidized versus unsubsidized loans for students, and usually, from what I was told with Dylan, a student is only able to take out up to $9,400, I think, in their own name, and then anything else would have to be either a parent plus or something else in the parent's name. A student can't take more than-- they won't allow them somehow on the FAFSA to take out more than, like, under $10,000 worth of debt.
On their own signature?
And their own name, if they're over 18.
Interesting.
And you have to reapply every year, even though, like, once your student is enrolled, they have to apply every January? Which I didn't know until this year.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Gisella. Appreciate it.
One quick question. You had mentioned last time, I think, that the Drama Club is going to be doing your Good Band Charlie Brown?
Yes, that is for our musical for the upcoming show. It's for our festival show, which is a 30 to 45-minute play.
I was the first class that went to festival, and I won Best Actor.
That's awesome. That's impressive.
That was a long time ago. When is that musical? Have they had them casted or anything? Just because I very much want to go, and I actually have something I want to give to whoever gets cast as Charlie Brown. I have a little memento from when I did it, I want to pass it on.
Yes, we have casted Charlie Brown. I-- yeah.
Talk afterwards.
They're an amazing actor. Yeah.
So both the boys' and the girls' basketball teams made the playoffs. Girls based on their record, the boys based on their power ranking. Do you know when the playoffs start?
I do not.
Okay. Anybody know? Okay. All right. The fifth item on the agenda, the Accelerator Prepare Program through the MSBA, has been removed from the agenda as a result of a conversation with the town administrator. I'll take that as a positive sign. We're working with the town. I'm sure that doesn't mean that the infrastructure of the high school has suddenly gotten better, but as long as we're cooperating with the town, I'll take that as a good sign. Next item on the agenda is the Director of Finance.
Good evening. In your packet you have the January report. Not much has changed since I reported in December. What I'll be doing very quickly, very soon, is reviewing all of the salaries for FY '24 and seeing, projecting out. We have projections out to the end of the year just to see if there's some adjustments needed. And as I think I've said, there will be some budget transfers, and these are due to how the salaries, how and where the salaries were budgeted and paid for versus the local budget or other funds. So there were some changes between the time we set the budget last year and July 1st. So there'll be some upcoming budget transfers, just to get everything straight for June 30th. The other accounts, the other large accounts that we talk about, transportation. We seem to have leveled off with some of our out-of-district and homeless and foster student transportation, so we-- I don't anticipate right now any more budget transfers. I was looking at that just today, and, you know, I think we've had some students leave their placements, as I've said, which affects transportation and tuition. And we've had some students that have moved out or are no longer a cost share with another district. So there's constantly change, so that's something that just has to be kept on top of all of the time. But I think for those accounts, I was concerned earlier in the year, but I think we've leveled off with that. Of course, the utilities at Wareham Elementary School, I know that there will be a budget transfer coming up in the next couple of months, in the next month or so, to get us through to the end of the year. I think that the other school utilities accounts or the other maintenance accounts in Wareham Elementary, are there sufficient enough balance to transfer in? So I'm not, you know, as a whole, I'm not concerned about that either. Special ed tuitions as well. I think because of students of movements and placements, we have-- we're in good shape with that as well. So I don't really anticipate any major changes. Like I said, there'll be some budget transfers coming up, just due to the way some of the line items were budgeted, and like I said, if they were paying from a grant or from school nutrition, changes that were made to the way that we did things between when the budget was set and when July 1st came. So I don't really have any other updates unless-- if anyone has any questions on the budget.
Questions? Kevin, you good?
I'm good. All you face is thank you.
So what I'm hearing is things are under control. No new surprises.
No new surprises right now.
Okay. I'm less concerned about transferring money to somewhere than I am transferring money from somewhere to make sure you always have some money to transfer from.
Right.
Because that-- without something-- So do you have a few accounts where you think, maybe we actually are going to be spending a little less, and you could transfer from, and what accounts would they be?
So it would probably-- most of them will be within the salary accounts. Like I said, the way some salaries are budgeted versus what the actual is for this year. We've had some staff positions not filled, or they've been filled at a lower salary. So I think within the salary budget as a whole, all of the salaries put together, it should be able to-- pluses and minuses will come out on the plus side. So we have-- our payroll bookkeeper has done an excellent job in keeping up the payroll and projecting out the payroll, so I don't anticipate any issues in that regard. And like I said, there is a sufficient balance in the special ed tuition accounts and in some of the other supply line items. So depending on whether, you know, the schools expend all of their supply, so that's always, you know, a place to look as well.
Dr. DeAndrea, do we have any positions that we would like to fill and can't? I'm not talking about positions you've consciously said, "No, that's good."
Right.
But we really can't fill them?
Well, we're having a very difficult time finding paraprofessionals. Very difficult time finding bus drivers. Those are two very challenging positions. And some, you know, like chemistry teacher at the high school, those types of positions are-- they're always challenging, but now they're even more so. So those are the areas that we've been having some challenges.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. So you have also a very interesting grants presentation.
Correct.
So unless there's further questions on the budget, let's move to that.
Okay. So you also have the summary of the FY '24 grants, and I follow the same format as I did last year. So I did make a few additions, but what you're seeing is all of the grants that have been approved by DESI or in some cases, Early Education and Care. Most of them are through the Department of DESI, through Mass DESI. Others are from some other, but like I said, most of it is through DESI. So what I did is I-- and these are what we have approved as of now. Last year, it was as of this time last year. That's not to say that in the next month or so, we could get approved for another grant or another grants, but this is a snapshot as of today. So at the top you have the beyond-school-time grants, and those support all of our after-school programming and summer programming. And one thing that I did add was a column to the right of the approved budget, which is whether it offsets the local budget or not. And so that-- I figured that that would be some good information to highlight. So you can see the beyond-school-time, as we've always said, that's always supported strictly by grants, so none of that offsets the local budget. But what is important to know is that if we didn't have these funds, we wouldn't be able to run these programs, or we would have to increase our budget. So the other part of the sheet is I broke it out, the approved budget. The Department of Ed, you apply for a grant, and when you apply, you say, "I want to spend this much on salaries." These are all the categories: retirement, contractual services, supplies and materials, travel, other, and indirect costs. You're allowed to take a fraction of the grant and charge it back for an indirect cost, such as a bookkeeper who does work for the grants. Because we take those indirect costs from school lunch funds, we have to take them from the grants. So this was something I've talked about over the past year, a change in the way we were doing things with school lunch, which now affected the grants. So we have to treat school lunch the same as we would treat any other federal award, not a state award, but a federal award. So you see that. So you see that most of the beyond-school-time grants are funded-- they're funding salaries and stipends. A lot of the after-school programming, like I said, there's also some supplies. Contract services would be any, you know, speakers that they bring in, any playgroups that are not led by our staff. And then other would be generally, it's transportation. So it does help to pay for some of the summer and after-school buses. So you can see that with some of the grants there. Overall, from FY '24, what we had at this time in FY '23, the beyond-school-time grants are down $141,000. So that's a pretty decent amount. But Jane does a great job. She's always applying for grants. She has been coming to me just today, talking about a different grant that she's applying for, so she's always seeking out other opportunities to get funds for her programs. One thing I will mention, I did include the same summary of the grants, so that when you see these, you can flip to the summary, the Word document. It gives a little snapshot about what all these grants are for, so you can see a quick few sentences on, you know, what the grant's priorities, purpose, what we're doing with it. And certainly, if you want more information, you can certainly ask me or the other grants managers, or it's all on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website. You can look under Federal Grants and get more information. The next one down, I included Circuit Breaker, because it's treated like a state grant in our financial system, and I think due to the large amount of money it is, I do like to talk about it. This year, we received $1,788,056 in Circuit Breaker. And this supports-- this pays for our-- a lot of our out-of-district public and private tuitions. The public tuitions would be the collaborative tuitions, and the private tuitions are the private schools. So those are funded through the local Wareham Public Schools budget, the 240 grant, which I'll talk about, and Circuit Breaker. So it's very important to have those funds, and they are an annual amount that is reimbursed to the school district. I will say that from FY '23 to FY '24, Circuit Breaker increased by $454,000. And that is through the efforts of our Student Services Department, Kathleen and Melissa, making sure that they've got that Circuit Breaker claim, claiming as much as we are allowed. And you can claim for instructional expenditures, anything in a student's IEP-related services, and in the last few years, transportation. So that's what's really bumped our claim up, is being able to claim transportation. And then they get a lot of that information from our Transportation Department, too. So it's a group effort, but it's very-- those funds are very important to our schools. The next group of grants are all the other grants, and you can see here, like, you can see that these-- some of them will offset the local budget. So when we do our budget presentation for the next year, there are some slides that discuss that, and we say that here are our offsets. So here's where you can see that. So we have some new grants that we didn't have last year. The first one, SOA, the Evidence-Based Practice. That's a multi-year grant, and that's helping us with $165,000 in salaries and some contract services and supplies and materials. So that is one of the few new grants that the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Schwam, was able to get, and that's helping us out with our budget this year and, more importantly, with our budget next year. So that's new to us this year. Title II-A is the Educator Effectiveness Grant, or it's for mentoring and professional development for educators. And so you can see there's some stipends for mentors, and it's mostly contract services and supplies for PD. And that is actually down about $1,300 from last year. Now, these are the amounts that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education says this is what you're getting. So these are entitlement grants. They're not competitive grants, some of these. So we are told in the summer, "This is your allotment, Wareham," and how-- and then we have to apply and then get approved, and then we can start using the grant.
So just to be clear, they tell you how much you're getting. Then they tell you to apply.
Yes. Yes. They tell you you're getting it. They tell you how much you're getting, but we still have to apply, and the application is quite cumbersome.
Of course.
If Dr. Schwam was here, I'm sure that she would agree. She does-- she and Mrs. Fay do a lot of the work, and also Jane Fondulas for the grants, and it's a big workbook, and they've changed the grants management system. So it was a learning curve for all of us this summer, so it is a lengthy process to get. But fortunately, we do get the funds because we need it, but it is a lengthy process to get, as you said, what they tell you you're going to get.
And you get the notice, as long as you apply, of how much it is, so you can budget accordingly.
Correct. So-- and these here are pretty stable, the entitlement grants. You know, there's some pluses and minuses over the years, so you can usually, like, we're, you know, Andrea and I will talk about Title I, and, you know, here's what we think we're going to get based on this year for next year, and here's how we're going to work it in the budget. So those are pretty predictable. There's a new one, the Emergency Management Planning Grant. That was for $34,000. And most of it is in stipends for educators and staff to do a lot of the emergency planning that they've been-- I know they've already been working on that throughout the year. The next grant is the Genocide Education Grant. We received that last year, and actually, it's up $16,000 this year. Targeted Assistance was new last year again. Now, this one, again, this will offset the local budget for salaries, and we received an increase this year of $25,000. And these are grants that we know that we're going to get next year, that we factored into the budget already. The IDEA Grant is the big special education grant. We had an increase of $30,000 from last year in that grant, and that covers mostly, you see, offsets the LEA for about $556,000, and that's primarily our special ed tuitions. Collaborative and private special ed tuitions are paid through that grant. And a few salaries, it's mostly a stipend, a couple of stipends for staff that's paid out of that grant. The next one is Early Childhood Special Education, the preschool grant. Again, that also-- that it's not offsetting the LEA currently, because in the past, it was mostly just supplies, so it was supplies for the preschool. And again, like the other grants, if we didn't have these grants, we wouldn't be able to purchase those supplies or those contract services, so that would put it on to the local budget. So this-- they're both working together to provide what's needed for Wareham. The next grant is also a large one, Title I. That is an increase of $62,000, and that one also offsets the LEA for about $528,000. And that's primarily salaries that it offsets, so it offsets some salaries at the elementary school. Title IV Grant, it's only up $630,000. It's another one of the entitlement title grants. The SEL and Mental Health Grant, last year we received $100,000. And so unfortunately, this year, we-- our funding was decreased, all the districts. We were counting on getting that $100,000 or more, because it's helping with some programs we have at the high school, and unfortunately, it was decreased by $37,000. Another new grant is the Homeless Emergency. That is for the students that-- we received that over the summer, and it's a smaller of the two. I'll talk about the larger of the two in a little bit. That was $14,000. Perkins supports our students at the high school that are involved in working-- work programs, and that's down just $274. Approaches to Student Cellphone Use, that's a new grant. We received that this year for $25,000. And finally, the Emergency Assistance Shelter Reimbursement. That's not a strict DESI federal grant, but they said it should be treated like a state grant, so I included it here for $58,000, and that's the grant that is $104 per student per day. So we received the first installment, actually, just a few days ago, and we will do a data upload in a couple of months and get-- in a couple of weeks, probably, and get another installment. I don't think it will be $58,000, because some of the students have left, so it will be lower, but we will-- we should get something, and then I believe there'll be another upload this summer. And that will carry-- that can carry over to next year, and it supports anything that the students that are living in the emergency shelters need. So all told, you can see that the grants are up $383,986 from last year, but the Circuit Breaker increase is $454,000. So those two together really means that our grants that we received this year compared to this time last year are down about $70,000. So it's really Circuit Breaker that's attributing to that increase. So as a whole, without that, the grants would be down about $70,000.
And is it fair to say that absent transportation being included in Circuit Breaker, it would have been even worse?
Correct. Oh, sure. Yes. Yes.
Any idea how much worse?
I can find that out. I don't--
Don't go to too much trouble. I'm just--
It's fairly simple.
When you say it would be worse, you mean the reimbursement would be less?
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
If you just-- if you want-- if you have any questions, I can take them. I just have to look for it on DESI's website.
You're saying you're going to multitask?
Yes. I'm going to try. I'm going to try.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Kristen?
I did have a couple of questions. I just want to say thank you. I love the format, and I love this list of grants with explanations. It's really, really helpful. The Mass After-School Program Rebound. So I looked for that on the list, and it's not there. Does that mean we just don't have that grant at this time?
It's actually-- it's not-- I didn't include it on this list this year. I should have. That is a private grant, so I didn't include it with all of these grants here.
Okay.
But I believe-- I think it's about six-- I want to say it's about $16,000, so I can look that up as well.
Okay. Well, no, I mean, you don't have to. Is it probably a beyond-school-time?
It is.
It is? Okay. All right. So it's part of that program?
Right. It's not-- yes.
Okay. Then, no, please don't look it up. And then my only other question is, I thought that we got a grant for the career pathways. I know I talk about this a lot, but we talked about applying for that grant, right? And I thought that we got it. But I don't know what-- maybe it's not called Career Pathways. Maybe it's called something else, and I just don't know that. But that's-- or maybe it's-- we haven't gotten it yet.
If I understand correctly, and if Dr. Schwam was here, I should be able to answer it better, but that's kind of in phases. We applied to the first phase of it, and we got accepted, and then there's a number of other steps that we have to complete before we officially start receiving the money.
Okay.
So-- but I can get you more detail.
That's all right.
But I know that it's--
Sure, it's a process.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I shared Joyce's appreciation for this report. I don't think I'd ever seen it so clearly done. It made me nervous, because the amount that it takes out of the LEA, the amount that it supports the LEA is a scary number. And the contractual adjustments, that's one thing that scares me. The other thing is, I assume that most of the contractual services are people?
I would say so.
Yeah.
I would say most of it is people, consultants or programs, programming.
So if we didn't have these grants, now I'm differentiating between Circuit Breaker, which is required by law, unless they change the law. But if these-- if the appropriation associated with some of these grants, you know, didn't happen, I suspect a lot of these programs are literally embedded into the education of our kids. And it's just scary to see us so vulnerable to the hiccups of an appropriation process. But it is-- process, but it is what it is. But the bottom line is I feel better informed because of the work Kristen is doing. So thank you.
Thank you. One, I do have the circuit breaker amount. So we received one million seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, like I said, and it was broken up for instructional and tuition was reimbursed at seventy-five percent of your net claim.
That's about as good as you can get.
And that total, yes, yes. That totaled nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. Transportation this year was reimbursed at fifty-seven percent. So that's kind of been all, a little bit all over the place. But our transportation amount was six hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. So your observation was correct.
At fifty-seven percent?
At fifty-seven percent, yes. The net claim, the net eligible transportation cost claimed was one million one hundred and fifty thousand.
That's such a big number.
It's, it's, I mean, thank goodness for this because it's, the transportation costs are, are very large.
Rising. Thank you as usual, Kristen. Anything else for Kristen, anything else you want to share?
I did have one, when you mentioned about contract services.
Yes.
One good point about that is in the IDEA grant, the special education grant, there's a large portion that in that grant, let's see, contract services, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, so about five hundred and fifty thousand of that is tuition. The remainder is contracted service providers for related services. So it might be Perkins School for the Blind, translation services, psychological services, ABA services, so any contracted service that our students need. And that's not even in the budget. So if we lost that portion of it, those are costs that would absolutely have to be shifted into the local budget. Other costs, unfortunately, if we lost grants, maybe some of the programs wouldn't exist, but in some cases they would have to and it would, you know, put stress on, on the budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we all set for Kristen? Okay.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I do, I have some bill and payroll warrants I'm going to ask you to approve, but before I do that, I should have said in good news that the superintendent called the snow day on Tuesday and the good news is that it snowed.
I was about to say, yes.
Good call.
There was a moment in the morning and I thought to myself, whoops. But you were right. It would have been really tough to get the kids home.
It's very stressful making those calls because if you don't call it, then you, you look at the sky and say, please don't snow, don't snow. And that first flake comes down. But if you do call it, then you're like, come on, it snows, snows. So it snowed and so that was good news.
So was it a productive day, Gisella?
I believe it was.
It's a good day to get caught up.
Yes, I agree. That was, that was, that was good news.
And I ask you, in, in the superintendent's newsletter, there's a payroll and bill warrants I ask you to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor, we need a roll call.
Aye.
Joyce?
Aye.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Aye, five zero zero. Okay. And accelerated repair, we are delaying.
Yep.
And anything else you want to talk about? All good?
That's all good.
Okay. April, you're on.
Yes. So the Policy Review Committee met and I have some policies that we went over and to vote on. That's in the packet. The first one was district and school family engagement. We voted no changes to that policy. So I'll entertain a motion to accept that policy as voted by the policy review.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Kevin?
Aye.
Aye, five zero zero.
Okay. So the second was the request to hearing with the school committee policy. The only change was in the second paragraph, the wording was added and must be within the school committee purview when it came to the entire sentence. Other than that, there was no other changes to that policy. So the second paragraph now reads, this policy respects the rights of persons to be heard by the committee and the right of the committee to prepare itself for intelligent discussion of matters on its agenda. Topics discussed are subject to the open meeting law, due process and notice and must be within school committee purview.
Interesting addition. I'm not criticizing it in any way, shape or form, but how did, how did it get in there?
I think the discussion was sometimes people think that the school committee has power over things that we don't and we wanted to make sure that the public, when they are requesting a hearing, know that our purview is budget, policy and superintendent accountability and valuation. And that's pretty much our, our job so that if there was something that was outside of our purview, we, we have the right to not allow a hearing.
So we don't have the right to micromanage the superintendent?
On certain issues.
Fair enough. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Brennan?
Aye.
Joyce?
Aye.
April?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Aye, five zero zero. Thank you.
Okay. The next policy is the Advanced Studies Program. And again, the only thing was added in parentheses, if available. This was in regards to a budget. So this was changing for, based upon the premise of public, that public funds may be expended for only public purpose. The Wareham School Committee shall annually determine it may provide in its budget, if available, funding in whole or in part for the cost of student participation in the following enrichment programs. Funds expended for this purpose will be limited to public school students of the town of Wareham. And that was for the ASLP program and Project Contemporary Competitiveness. Those are the only two that are mentioned in this particular policy, but that was only if the funds were available. So people can ask for funding. That does not mean that they will be granted funding for those programs.
Has there ever been funding from the budget for either of those programs?
I believe Scott mentioned in the meeting that there was, but it's, I believe, like, you know, like a first come, first served basis and only if there are extra funds available.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just sitting here thinking, if available, is it clear that it means if money is available? But I guess it is. It doesn't. It's not important. Okay.
We did have a conversation about whether or not to remove this policy in general. However, if there was like, say, some sort of like allocation or something left, we didn't want to have to reinstate a policy. So we opted to just add if available to the policy to keep it in as, as, as is for now.
Well, so if we're going to keep it, the last sentence, I guess, funds expended for this purpose will be limited to, I would rather it said, students enrolled in Wareham Public Schools. Because I could be a public school student of the town of Wareham but be enrolled at Old Rochester or born or anywhere. Not to pick on those two schools.
I think.
I'm really being very picky right now.
I was going to say, I think it's implied that it's the town.
It's implied, but it's not. I mean, if we're going to review it.
But it's also if available. So if someone who's not in our district, we could still say no if they're out of district.
If it becomes available, if there's money available, I mean, if we've had, we have it, it's a short policy, we could just change that. So I guess I would propose that we change it.
No, I like, I like, in this particular case, I think a picky is worthwhile.
Okay.
I, I don't think it has any, it's, you aren't changing the intent. So what language are you proposing?
Funds expended for this purpose will be limited to.
Students of Wareham Public Schools.
Students enrolled at Wareham Public Schools.
I can get behind that.
Okay.
I don't think that the committee would object.
Jamie, you have that? Okay.
It's the same meaning, like you said.
A hundred percent. So just clarifying. Absolutely.
Yeah, all good. So I'll take a motion to approve as amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Joyce? April?
Yep.
Kevin?
Aye.
Aye, five zero zero. Thank you, Joyce.
Okay. So the next policy that we reviewed was the Crisis Response Policy. The only thing that we changed was under the protocols when it says to refer to the current procedures. We removed the word flip chart because that is obsolete now and the program that the schools use now is called Navigate 360. So we just updated that. So that's the only change to that policy.
Good catch. What is the status of Navigate 360?
It's implemented.
Implemented?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good.
So a motion to accept that policy as amended.
Yes, second?
Second.
Second? Joyce?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, five zero zero.
So the next policy was the Animals in the Classroom policy and there were no changes made to that policy. So a motion to accept as is.
So moved.
Why do I, why do I have this memory that we were going to have as part of the, the high school, I guess, an animal?
We are.
Has that been delayed?
It's, it's waiting for the dog to be born and trained and it's, yeah.
It does seem like we've been waiting a long time.
It is, it's a, it's a process.
I have asked opposite of that team lately, yes, and he's still in a waiting.
Yeah, the needs program, they're very particular with the training of the dogs. So once they go through the training, if that dog is not trained in the way that they would like, they start over with a new dog. So the dog has to be literally through the needs program. It's like the creme de la creme of service dogs and therapy dogs. And if they, if there's anything where the dog is slightly off, it starts over.
I bet there are some great dogs that fail.
Yes, and they end up becoming amazing pets.
Exactly.
But because they're not, the amount of public interaction that these dogs would get, they would need to be excessively obedient.
My, my dog would fail. I mean, that's.
Oh, my dog wouldn't even pass the test. He would be, he's the least obedient dog on the planet. Yes, he'd fail very cutely, but, so just a motion to accept this as is because there were no changes to this policy.
I'll take that as a motion. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Brennan, Joyce?
I'll say yes, but I'm just surprised that we have a, we have to point out that they can't bring bats to school. I did, I'm, I'm voting yes because the first line says the principal has to.
Well, part of it is for, also for like presentations of outside services. So like if like a science class wanted to bring in a certain vendor that had like different animals, there were certain ones that were like poisonous animals were not allowed in the school. So there were different criteria. So it's not all just like service animals, but it's also for like scientific presentations or anything like that. So it kind of encompasses animals in general. So that's why there are some very specific, if it got out, kind of, no, let's just, that one's not coming.
Oh, that's, okay. Sorry.
I got a yes and a yes.
And a yes.
And Kevin, yes?
Yes.
And I'll say yes and I'll, I'll take a short, I'll tell you a short story and which is Judy and I once woke up in our bedroom to a bat, which we thought, no big deal because believe it or not, yours truly captured it and then let it go outside. Except that we were then informed by, because she works at a veterinary hospital, that, oh, no, no, it's not that simple. And we had to get rabies shots because they can bite you and you don't even know it because the bite is so tiny. And of course, you can get rabies and that's a very serious thing to contract.
Do you still like garlic?
Do you have a reflect?
I love garlic.
Okay. See, then you're good. You're good.
Okay.
Okay. So the next policy is the service animals policy. And again, this was a policy with no changes. So it would be a vote to approve as is.
So moved.
Second.
Brennan?
Aye.
Joyce?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, five zero zero.
Okay. So the last policy is the public records policy. This was in regards to public record requests. We changed, as you can see, what's highlighted, we removed the redundancy in the second section as that didn't, there are different ones for municipality and for public records. So this was one that was not applicable to a municipality. So that was removed to align with, I believe Matt pointed that one out and to change for five cents a sheet to ten cents a sheet for the cost increase of services for that. There was also one more that the fee must be paid before receipt of the records.
Yeah.
So those were the changes to that policy.
So I have a question. What is your opinion, either one of you can express your opinion on this and maybe all three of you, as to whether ten cents covers both the copier expense and the labor associated with doing it?
There is in the next paragraph in C that it can only, if it requires more than two hours of employee time, that there is an additional charge per hour.
So two hours is not a trivial amount of time.
Right. So it would be ten cents, ten cents per page. And then after that, if it takes longer than two hours, it would be twenty-five dollars an hour.
And, and I'm not suggesting this is poorly written by any means. I'm just confirming with the people who actually have to honor these requests, whether the, I assume you had input and this is, you support this as, as a neutral. We don't want to deter it, but we also don't want to not be properly reimbursed.
I believe it aligns with the MGL, the way that it's written for the state, so.
In terms of the amount?
I, I believe.
The MGL has a recommended amount?
I believe that that's where the policy came from, which they're noted below. MGL, Chapter 66, Section 10, 262, Sections 18 and 46 and Chapter 121, Acts of 2016.
And MGL actually suggests we raised it, suggested we raise it from five to ten cents?
Well, no, that, that, the, the ten cent came from a committee member. And the rest of the writing was already in place and that came from.
I, that's, that's fine. So the ten cents and the twenty-five dollars an hour after two hours?
The twenty-five came from, that was already there. So that was from the MGL, the way that things were presented to us when it was adopted in, I don't even know when that would have been added because we adopted it first in nineteen eighty-seven. So I'm assuming that the most up previous, it was last amended in 2022, before that in 2016. Well, the last one that it said chapter was Acts of 2016. So I'm guessing that December 21st meeting of 2016 would have been when that might have been changed, if it was changed.
There's been some inflation since 2016.
Yeah, a little bit.
That is very true, but that was not, that didn't seem to be a concern of anyone on the committee at the time when we reviewed it during the meeting.
So I come back to the superintendent. Are you comfortable with the amounts in this document?
I am, yes.
Fine. That's all I was looking for. But April, as usual, was very thorough.
So a motion to approve this one as amended.
So moved.
You mean as amended with the?
With the highlight, the changes that we did in the meeting, yes.